This is a public hearing about the ad valorem taxes. I will say that we've got one of our commissioners that is running late and we need to wait to be able to set him up on a virtual call, which we've got IT trying to do at that time. So I'm going to go ahead and we'll give a few minutes to IT to see if we'll get Commissioner McKinney online. So just hang with us for a couple of minutes.
Something to do with flights. Some kind of horn that she had out of town.
Really? Yeah.
Something to do with.
Maybe. Yeah.
In the round table, I don't make a lot of children help me at all of his discretionary father. He's not going to be listening, is he?
I don't think that.
He would be if he was listening.
Let's go ahead and do the agenda of our pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask everyone to stand while we have a word of prayer and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. And then we'll hopefully conduct the rest of our meeting once we get Commissioner McKinney online. Mr. Branch, if you would.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything that you do for us. Thank you for allowing us to live in Jackson County and the state of Florida. God, we thank you for everything that you do. We thank you for our non-blessings and then we thank you for our un-blessings. We ask that you lead God and direct us on every decision that we make tonight. Thank you for everything in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, as a reminder, we're waiting to, on IT, to get Commissioner McKinney online so he can participate in the the discussions concerning both the millage rate and the budget. We got anything yet? Willam?
We don't have anything yet. Check the list, Brad.
He coming from Dye Sealer?
That is on Howie 73, so.
What's the latest on the storm?
What's that?
What's the latest on the storm?
I haven't really. I got something from Renee, but I didn't look at it. I think it's not coming this way is what I understood.
I think you're right. I think we're going to get a little rain, right?
Tomorrow or today?
Yeah, tomorrow afternoon. Thirties. A lot.
Well, I will be in Canada.
Was in Canada. What part?
Uh, west of Calgary.
Going fishing?
Uh, hiking. Canoeing and horseback riding.
Oh. Well, let me just tell you something. Have you ever been up there this time of year?
It's, I know it's cold right now.
No, well, it's.
There's snow on the ground.
But if it's warm, black flies and mosquitoes will eat you alive. You see those movies of the old caribou and everything on the tundra?
Yep. Just follow them around.
I've been up there and it is horrible. They're just all over you and they don't live very long, so they're all hungry.
Well, hopefully, I think there's snow on the ground right now, so it's supposed to be during the nights down in the thirties and the forties and then.
Well, you'll probably be.
Yeah.
I went fishing in a lake in Canada. It was like 25 miles long and 12 miles wide. We're out in the middle of the lake fishing. And the black fly.
It's all over you.
My, I had a white sock, shorts. My white sock was bloody by lunchtime. I told the guy, get me out of here. There's no fish big enough for me on stage. But the black flies eat you during the daytime and then as it gets dark, they have a war with the mosquitoes to see who's going to get you.
Hopefully, we won't be battling that. I thought we were leaving mosquitoes behind.
All they talk about the cold weather and how we need cold weather to kill the mosquitoes. Go up there and you'll see.
Well, Alaska is the same way.
Oh, yeah.
Alaska is the same way.
But. It's bad.
I think it would be all right for me to go ahead and read this so we can get maybe started on part of this. But today's meeting is to fund the proposed budget, which requires 7.945 mills, which is 5.42% more than the current year rollback rate of 7.5366. The purpose is to maintain current services under the jurisdiction of Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and other constitutional officers. Um, I think it would be okay to go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to either speak for or about the proposed budget or the proposed tenant, tenant of millage rate? Now would be the time. Yes, if you would come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name's Roy Bumper. Didn't we just have a tax increase last year?
We had a tax increase last year. But let me be clear, we're really not increasing the tax rate if we stick with this proposed. We're keeping it the same, the same millage rate.
As it was, as the increase of last year.
The millage rate at 7.9450 is the same as it was last year.
So what's the proposal for then?
The, the proposal, because, because of some additional economic development, new houses being built, some structures being appraised at a higher rate than they were last year. It, the amount of taxes that will be generated by the same millage rate as last year will be more tax revenue, but it's the same rate. Does that make sense? In other words, last year's millage rate was 7.945. The proposed millage rate that we're advertising is exactly the same rate.
So because property values have increased.
Some property values have increased, some additional development has occurred. Uh, and so with that additional, additional increase in value of some properties and additional economic development that has led to improvements to different structures and maybe even new development at 7.945, the same millage rate as last year, it's generating more tax revenue.
Understand that.
Okay.
Um, I've got a, I've got a a bit of a bone to pick with the resolution that was passed for allowing people to do owner-built homes. And what that's being used for is a 365-day camping permit. The resolution states that the person that's getting that variance has to have both the RDO and they have to have a construction permit. The planning, the planning commission is granting those variances just with an RDO. That means the county is getting no tax money from the people that are living in sheds, that are living in motorhomes. So I think it creates an undue burden on the rest of us that are paying our fair share. Um, and those are not being taxed. Is there anything in the works to look at that? We literally have people living in sheds.
We do.
Um, and, and there's people that are living in sheds and there's a family of six living in a 300, it can't be more than 360 square feet. Um, they have, and God bless them, they have children. Um, they're using county resources. I, but they're not paying into the county's coffers. The rest of us are footing the bill for all the ones that are living in motorhomes, sheds, tents, whatever. They're using county resources.
Where do you, where do you live?
We live in Compass Lake.
And I, I think, to be fair, it is a problem. It's a problem that we're aware of. I know Commissioner Branch has looked at it. I've looked at it. I know Commissioner Peacock is aware of it, as is staff. Um, I know that there's probably more of that going on in the area around you. It's, it's in a lot of different areas, but it, uh.
I don't think it's unique to Compass Lake.
No, it's not unique, but I think there seems to be more of it down there than anywhere else in the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Something that has transpired that you may not be aware of, I think we have now got two code enforcement officers. We.
I'm, I'm, I'm aware. Nothing happens. We've, we've reported, they've gone.
Well, there are people living in sheds.
Tents.
Tents and motorhomes, campers all over the county.
Right.
We got these two guys, or I guess they're guys, two people. Once they get up and running, those are issues that they can address and will address. Now, you're asking about your, the value. Your taxes are going up because the state has increased the value of your property 3%.
Well, the state isn't increasing the value of our.
Oh, yes, they do.
The property appraisers.
Well, the property appraiser is doing what the state has told her to do. And they tell her 3% increase. That's all that the state legislature allows the state to go up. So every year I've sat on this board, the value of property in Jackson County has creeped up 3%, 3%. So we're holding the rate the same, but your taxes are going up because the state has increased the value of your property.
The property praiser has increased the property value of my property. It, I mean, I mean, if it went up more than, you're saying there's a cap at 3%?
3% is cap.
Yeah, that's the cap.
Right.
Um, it doesn't have to go up 3%.
Uh, the state, I think mandates that she raise it 3%.
I'd like some clarification on that.
Go see Ms. Rebecca Morrissey.
I'm sorry?
The property appraiser.
Okay.
Again, we're keeping the millage rate the same, but it is generating more tax revenue.
Well, I, I mean, hopefully the county is growing. I mean, that's the goal of all of us here and you especially.
And it, and it is in some respects. It's not growing maybe as fast as what we'd hope. And we would hope that most of those tax increases are coming from, in, in my book, new development as opposed to increased property values, even though, you know, we. Increased property values as a result of improvements to houses is good, to residences is good, but increased increased property values, just as a, you know, as a 3% increase is not necessarily a good thing.
I, I think you did us a little dirty in Compass Lake by removing those ordinances. I'll tell you guys straight up, the, the appraisal value of a mobile home is about 50% of what a stick-built home is. We had a nice little thing going with stick-built homes blossoming in that area. And I think you guys did us dirty. I'll tell you that straight up.
Yes. Well, and, and we've had a lot of discussions about that. And I've had, you know, a number of people that have said the same thing, that live down in Compass Lake.
70% of the people asked.
Yeah, but.
Did those be retained?
Yeah.
They, you guys did a survey. 70% of the respondents.
I think it was responded, responded to by all of those that lived there. Um, but I will also say.
But you guys, you guys put out the survey.
But we don't represent just Compass Lake in the hills.
I, I, I understand that, but you did the county dirty as well. If, if you're, if you have an area restricted to stick-built homes and they're assessed at double the rate of what a mobile home is, you're cutting, you're cutting future benefits to the county.
But if, if that person can't afford a stick-built home and they're instead living.
Plenty of places in the county. I gave you guys documentation.
Instead of living, building a stick-built house, they're living in a tent because they can't.
Well, that's a problem that needs fixed. That's a whole, whole different problem.
The pre-manufactured homes, which is a very well-built house, can possibly provide that alternative means of doing that.
Okay. I also provided you documentation that showed by the state that they depreciate. I've, I've looked at 30, I've looked at 30-year-old mobile home values. You're getting $300 a year in taxes on some of those, a year, because they have depreciated to that extent.
But you look at some of the houses down there, stick-built houses, and they've depreciated as well.
Not, not to that extent. You show me a stick-built home that you're getting $300 a year in taxes.
I know, but I can, I can show you some houses, stick-built houses that should be not getting any more than that. I don't know, but they're afraid to have it. They're, they're deplorable.
I'm, I'm going to say straight up, the, your property appraiser assesses twice the value per square foot of a stick-built home, a new one, as they do on a, on a mobile. I've got, I've got an example right down the street from me in our home.
I understand that, but a, a mobile home is generating more taxes than a tent or an RV.
There's plenty of space in Jackson County for those mobiles to be. There were zoning restrictions and, and there were people that counted on those zoning restrictions when they bought that property.
Well, that, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
They planned their retirement.
I, I understand what you're saying, but that, that's an issue that's already been decided.
Oh, maybe.
At least for now.
No. Regardless, there's some, something needs to be done to address the, the people living in sheds. They're, they're using county resources and, and the ones that are paying into the county are, are the ones that are being taken advantage of.
Let me address that just a minute. Uh, as you know, y'all admit, y'all, y'all met the lady that we had working there, which was in code enforcement. And she was, basically, she was staying in Compass Lake in the hills all the time and she made a lot of cases. She's left. Uh, we had to hire a new guy, get him on board, get him certified. Uh, so hopefully that will go back as it was before. Uh, before we had about as many cases as magistrate could handle at one time. Now, I'm sure that's went down since she's left because of the break of having somebody do it now. It's my understanding that he is, we do have somebody hired. He has been qualified. Uh, we have two.
Yeah.
Both of them qualified.
The other one.
I can give you a place. There's somebody, there's somebody living in a U-Haul. There's somebody living in a U-Haul with a shut-off front.
If, if that's reported, it needs to be reported and y'all know how to report that. I mean, we've talked about that before. Uh, but we do have somebody back in that position now with that in mind to work with.
Okay. You've got a resource in Compass Lake and you have a resource in Compass Lake in the hills. And I don't think the, the county's taking advantage of it. They advertise it on their county website. All the, they advertise zoning restrictions still. It's front and center on, if you look up Compass Lake in the hills in Jackson County, Florida, all the zoning restrictions pop up. First thing you see, it's on Jackson County's website.
The O's.
I'm sorry?
The O's. Yes. So we get that correct. And I, I didn't realize that.
So, um, again, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think you need to evaluate what's going on with those and something needs to be done. And, and it's not just us. All over the county, people are living in trailers. I mean, we're talking campers and everybody's paying into that except them. There's, there's no real estate assessed on them, but they're taking county resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak either for or against or about the proposed millage rate or the budget? Okay, with that, we'll close out the public hearing. I will open up a regular meeting. The first order of business is to adopt a tentative millage rate. Um, there is a recommended motion that you see, which would be that I move that we adopt a tentative millage rate of 7.945 for operating purposes in Jackson County for the fiscal year '24, '25 by resolution. I'll remind, we'll remind the commission that once this is set, that we cannot go above that, but we can bring it back down. I think the discussions that I've heard from the most part have been a consensus that this be the direction that we go at this point in time. Um, so with that, Chair will entertain any further discussion, comments or a motion. So you got a motion from Mr. Branch?
I second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to one with Commissioner Peacock voting no. Uh, the second item that we need to address is the, we need to adopt the tentative budget. Uh, a recommended motion could be that I move that we adopt a tentative county budget in the amount of $142,347,515. This is net of transfers between funds for the Jackson, for Jackson County for the fiscal year '24, '25 by resolution.
So move.
A motion from Commissioner McKinney. Second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Comments?
I'm going to vote no on this, but I don't feel this board has done due diligence with this budget. And I voiced my concern about this some time ago. There are things I see in there that is flawed and it's costing the taxpayers money, so I'm going to be voting no.
And, and you did say that last time and I think my response was is that we've, you know, I've sat through this budget process. This will be the fourth time that I've sat through it. And, uh, three of the times that we went through it, we did go through it line item by line item. And we did find some items where we were able to cut some dollars. We also found a number of items that were under budgeted. And we knew that was under budgeted and we knew that we were going to have to come back with some amendments, which we did. And I think, um, you know, we're, we're just like about everybody else. We're, we're, um, uh, dealing with higher prices, gas prices, diesel prices, supply costs, uh, you know, everything that a typical homeowner is facing in the way of increased cost. What about by inflation, food costs have gone up. Our revenue basically has stayed essentially the same. Luckily, we've seen some increase uh, in, uh, revenue generated by additional property value increases. But where our revenue has been inching up, the cost of providing minimal level services to the county has continued to go up year after year after year. And we, I mean, the first two years that I sat on here, we were using non-recurring funds to fund that difference. And I mean, we're talking about big differences. I don't recall the exact numbers that we were dealing with, but multi, multiple millions of dollars that we were in the hole. And, uh, we went through that budget, spent three weeks going through it line item by line item and, and barely made a dent in what we, uh, we could, what we could find. And she'll ended up having to use, fund it with non-recurring dollars. So I, I understand what you're saying. Um, but I don't think even going through a line item by line item exercise again is going, was going to be beneficial to bridge the gap of what we needed to do. With that being said, any, any other comment?
Nah, let it go.
Mr. Chairman, can I just also add that just as a reminder in this budget, uh, you all still have frozen positions that you still have not fully funded. Um, you did, were able fortunately to add a couple of those back this year because of needs that have gone unmet. Um, and then for a couple of years in a row, we funded no capital projects, uh, which is huge to try, because the first year you do that, you're behind. It's very hard to ever catch up in replacing equipment. And so just reminding the public that we still have not gotten back to where we, we really need to be, but we're, we're, we're making our way there.
And when, and when you say capital improvement projects, it's not new buildings and things like that. It's ambulance remounts. It's, uh, you know, new equipment. It's, uh, across the board. It's things that, uh, we need to continue to upgrade just to stay ahead of the curve.
Tractors, motorators.
Yeah, that's what I want to say, you know, you could, you have to look at this thing as, you know, as operational business operation. You know, that's, that's not, not for profit. So we're going to definitely, you know, continue boards previous, I mean, boards of, uh, private boards going to have to continue to, uh, make sure that they stay above inflation and keep the pace, you know, for, you know, inflation.
I mean, if you don't replace equipment and keep it maintained properly, you have situations where you're, you're, you're constant, you're constantly in the, in the shop getting things fixed.
And I understand all.
Yeah, I know you do.
Uh, but, you know, when I look through and I see, I'll just, I'm going to pick on the sheriff. They come in here every year and they want $96,000 for patrol equipment. Sheriff himself said he buys new guns, new holsters, new vests. He's got 53 sworn officers, I think, unless it's gone. You spend about $500 on a gun, about $500 on a vest and probably 100, 150 on a holster. So once a cop gives a gun and a holster, they normally don't change. So where does that money go? The sheriff bought a brand-new F-350 and a skid steer. And, and that's running probably $100,000 with a trailer. Wow. I, I see things like that. It, it gets my attention. And not only the sheriff, there's others in there too that need to be addressed, but.
Well, I think if you'll do some checking. The 350 wasn't, and he traded some, some seized vehicles for that. Uh, because I questioned that setup, but I want to get and check it instead of saying. Uh, he did not buy a skid steer because I checked that.
He wanted.
They need one, they rent one, just like your iPad did.
Okay, because I was told he didn't buy one.
I want to say for that, but, you know, I sat here that in, in the locks, there was a year or some things were cut and cut and cut. They about cut us out of business. Every day in District Four, if we do anything special, like in Roden Bridge, we got to take people off of equipment that they were hired to run and run some maintenance because we don't have any feet. Y'all froze 10 positions. And I, maybe you had to. I don't know what he, I'm not down on him. But we're expected to provide a level of service. And we get to the point that we can't provide that, we have to do something to provide it. Because I, I as a citizen expect to be provided. Uh, I want it to be provided. I want the, the best ambulance running to pick me up for my loved ones. I want the fastest car the sheriff's office has got to come so much racing to my house. Uh, on the fastest fire trip to get there from my house is on. And I think we had gotten to that point. Well, we didn't have that. Um, and I think this year, we're not, as, as Daniel said, I don't think we're back to where we should be, but we're on the road to.
A little bit closer.
We're a little closer.
And I'll tell you something else that is, and I talked about inflation and the coffee, uh, and everything that, uh, you know, the cost of materials, gas, and everything going up. And also the minimum wage has, has really hurt us. And it's, it's been something that, uh, you know, we're, we're continuing the battle with having to raise the minimum wage and, uh.
Well, now, the solar farms are supposed to offset that. I don't know. I don't think they fully pay for it. But the revenue that was generated off of those was supposed to take care of the.
I do know that there's been some, some, um, reassessment of some of the capital elements in those solar farms that is generating some additional dollars this year uh, in the way that they define it. And I don't know all the details, but I know that it has generated some additional tax revenue. Maybe it's moving toward, uh, you know, funding some of those, those wage increases. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries three to one with Commissioner Peacock voting no. Um, I'll also announce that the final budget hearing date is going to be Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 at 5:01 PM for anyone in the audience that wishes to, uh, take part of that. And, uh, anything else, Willam, that we need to take care of? Sarah? Okay, with that being said, we'll. Okay, with that being said, we'll close out this special meeting. Go ahead.
I'd like to say, I apologize for my tardiness. I had an unexpected trip out of town.
We're just glad you made it.
Thanks, sir.
We're gonna close out the special meeting.